Without training wheels, so we're working on the third.
Exciting.
That's awesome.
That's a milestone. Wow.
It is.
Oh, I remember that day. There's nothing like it.
Okay, I'm gonna tell you something.
Yeah, it was pretty cool.
It won't be long that they'll be driving off in the car.
Don't say that, Ann.
Waiting out the back window and...
Come on. Ann, let him into the room.
Hopefully they don't, uh, hopefully they don't drive like they ride their bikes.
Okay.
Ready?
Make them wear helmets in the car.
It is.
Oh, I remember that day. There's nothing like it.
Okay, I'm gonna tell you something.
Yeah, it was pretty cool without training wheels, so we're working on the third.
It won't be long that they'll be driving off in the car. Waiting out the back window and...
What did he do?
Hopefully they don't, uh, hopefully they don't drive like they ride their bikes.
I apologize. I didn't pause, uh, mute it.
That comment wasn't as funny the second time around.
I thought it was. Are we, I'm waiting for it to loop out.
No.
Okay. Okay, so I'm gonna call it a order the April twenty first, twenty twenty work session for the TIP City Board of Education, and we will start with a pledge of allegiance. Ready?
Oh, guys, I didn't pause.
A pledge of allegiance.
Allegiance.
Of the United States of America.
Into the Republic of...
Which stands one nation under God.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You wanna do the attendance, Dave? You hear it?
Feedback.
Yeah, it's bad.
Yep, hold on.
Take your time.
Okay.
Still going.
I might suggest that we all take turns muting to see which one's the culprit.
It's me.
It's the YouTube loop. It's the YouTube loop.
Where is it still playing?
Dave, it sounds like it's on a ten-second delay. Do you have it on delay?
It is on delay, but I don't have any more videos playing.
You got it. Nope, you didn't. Mm-hmm. I'm gonna start all over, so that doesn't keep...
It is on delay. I don't have any more videos playing.
Does anybody else have the YouTube stream playing?
No, sir. Mm-mm.
You got it. Nope, you didn't.
Found it. All right, I think we're good to go. I apologize for that.
No.
Hey, don't worry. Okay, so you ready to do the, uh, attendance?
Yes, ma'am.
It's...
That's my dog barking in the background, by the way.
All right. Okay, uh, Mrs. Dunaway.
Here.
Mrs. Doll.
Here.
Mrs. Heatherly.
Here.
Mr. Patri.
Here.
Mrs. Zakor.
Here.
All present accounted for this evening. We do have a quorum tonight.
Okay, great. I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Kump for the discussion items. I think, Dave, you're A.
Yep. Uh, so, uh, I'll just start with the vacation and holiday policy discussion support. Uh, so in the past meetings, I've mentioned that I'd like us to go through our, our vacation policy, and that includes our holidays that are paid for staff members. Um, the attachment that I sent out includes all of the documentation that is in our current policy for vacation and holidays. And I included the higher revised code section in that as well, where we get most of our policy, because that's what it says. We're gonna follow it by law. And then I have my proposals. Uh, and did everybody get a chance to go through and look at those proposals? Okay, so just to summarize for those watching, um, currently, we provide vacation after someone has been with the district for a full year. On their first-year anniversary, they receive ten days of vacation, two weeks. After ten years of service, and then they receive ten days on their anniversary for the first ten years. After their tenth anniversary, they move to fifteen days. And after their twentieth anniversary, they move to twenty days. Uh, what we found was our policy is lagging behind, uh, because we're following the ORC that was, uh, established back in, oh, what did I say? That was nineteen seventy-five. And we're finding when we hire people from other districts, they're, uh, surprised at where our vacation policy is. And so what I am presenting is I'd like to change it. So instead of being ten and twenty years, I'd like to change it from one year to eight years, and then from nine to, uh, fourteen, or yeah. Eighth year, and then fifteen years is the anniversary dates, to go from two weeks, three weeks, and four weeks. And instead of waiting for the whole year to pass to give them all of their days, I'd like to start accruing them on a monthly basis, prorated, like we do with sick leave right now. Every, the fifteenth of every month, we give, uh, the employees one point two five days of sick leave. But I like to do the same for the vacation, um, starting when people get hired. And I borrowed from the policy from Troy to get some of the wording on this. So this is done up in Troy. And we also, at this time, currently follow ORC when it comes to paying out employees when they resign from the district. And currently, that allows for vacation earned in the past two years, and then any vacation that they have accrued but not received in the last year of employment. Now, if we change this policy around and everyone is accruing vacation while they work throughout the year, then there, there's no more accrual, because they're earning it as they receive it. They're getting it as they earn it. That's what I meant to say. So my, my, um, recommendation, because we do do this for some of our administrative employees, I know that Dr. Kump has it in her contract. She can accrue up to three years of vacation, and anything past that is lost. If she doesn't use it, she loses it. So I'd like to, uh, recommend that if people earn up to three years, which is what we have let people do, when I came to the district, the payroll system was set up to allow people to earn three years. But we weren't paying out that three years. We were only paying, say, two years and five days or ten days. So I'd like to change it so that it specifically states that when an employee leaves, they can receive payout at their daily rate for all vacation that they've earned and is on the books under their name. Any questions on that part of the suggested changes that I'm proposing?
I have a question, Dave.
Yes, Ann.
Okay, I'm sorry, because I'm, I'm really not up to speed on all this. This is a little bit challenging for me, all, all this data. But when you talk about these vacation days, you're, you're talking about employees that are working year-round. Is that correct?
Yes, full-time big, full-time employees that don't have off at Christmas break or at, um, spring break or over the summer. These are anyone that works eleven months or more out of the year. So that's pretty much anyone that works over two hundred and twenty-six days. And so we're only talking, maybe, uh, we're talking our custodians and some of our secretaries, uh, the high school secretary is two hundred and fifty-eight days, and the board office staff are two hundred and fifty-eight days as well. And then administration staff. They're the only ones that are full-time employees.
Dave, I have a really quick question.
Sure.
Good Friday is listed on there.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know that teachers always have Good Friday off every year. Um, maybe... Greta, do you, have you historically always tried to make sure Good Friday is a day that is off on the calendar?
Yes, we have. I mean, just traditionally, the TIP community has, uh, preferred having that day available for families. And so I know when this year's contract, it was off. I mean, it's, it's just a non-school day. And so, uh, same thing with, uh, our projected calendar. The two that we have projected ahead, both of those on Good Fridays are non-school days.
Okay.
Uh, I only, I use Good Friday because the previous treasurer before me had negotiated that they have that day as a holiday in their contract. And so I do believe you're correct, Corinne. A few years ago, we did not have Good Friday as a, a non-school day. And so...
Because I was thinking that if we, if, if we specify that day and then future calendars, then that kind of locks in the teacher contract. Another day that you don't have off that I think is reasonable is the day Christmas Eve or, or the day after Christmas. Um, I think that's really special to a lot of families. I don't know if that would be a trade.
Well, that's, that's the item K. Item K is one day during the Christmas break.
Okay, so they could use it whenever they want.
Yeah, because honestly, with, with the teachers being off, there's really just a skeleton crew working during that week or that break anyway.
Right.
Um, so it would be nice to let them choose which day works better for them. Although we could just change it to Christmas Eve. Again, this is just a work session discussion. This is just, uh, spitballing it right now, so...
I think I... I'm sorry. I'd like to recommend that you recognize what a federal holiday is. And those other days, I would suggest we call those non-scheduled days. So I'm not opposed to having the Friday after Thanksgiving off, but that's not recognized as a holiday. I think we should call them non-scheduled days and include those in those days off as part of the policy. But we should stick to what holidays are recognized by the federal government, is my, is my opinion. It also then would imply that if you're scheduled to work on non-scheduled days, such as the days between Christmas and New Year or over spring break per se, then the employees that are scheduled during that time would be able to use vacation during that time to have those days off. Does that make sense?
Uh, I, you know, I put all of these days into the calendars when I create them, and the payroll system uses these. So the more we can be consistent, the better for me. Um, I'm not sure. I tried looking up the federal holidays. I mean, that's why I don't state in the policy, "Support staff will be paid for the following federal holidays", because there are some here that we don't normally receive. Columbus Day is not listed in here as one.
Yeah, Good Friday is typically not recognized as a holiday. The day after Thanksgiving, Christmas Eve is not recognized as a holiday. So I'm just making this suggestion that we delineate between the two.
I, I see Joellen's point. I mean, and not only that, it's not only federal, it's state holidays as well. So, I mean, then I know they're typically consistent, but, um... And I do like the idea, Dave, where you have one day during Christmas recess and allowing that to be at, at the employee's choice. I think that flexibility, for whatever sched, you know, reason, is, is really nice.
I, I guess, Joellen, what I could do is we could have the non-highlighted items stay there, and then we could also say additional, uh, days off for full-time employees or employees that receive... We could have a second section that has those three days under there instead. Instead of calling them holidays, additional days off will include Good Friday or the Friday after Thanksgiving.
And then you just code them such on your calendar. That would just be my suggestion. I'm not...
Or day, or days off, days off recognized by the district, you know? So it shows...
That's good. Okay, does anybody have, is, does anybody wanna suggest something besides the Good Friday day? Because like Corinne said, there could be a chance in the future where that's not a day off for everybody.
I think if people want it off, they would request it off and use their vacation.
True, they do.
Yeah, and I think that's what's really happening right now, that, uh...
Except, except our classified staff are the ones... So we have lots of classified staff that are, that receive holiday pay, but they don't have vacation, because they're not full year-round staff members. So...
So maybe, Dave, instead of, um, Good Friday, you can say one day during spring break? Because I think that's, uh, an equal exchange, kind of? Because there's not students in the building during, um, spring break, generally.
True.
Well, and then you have your, the classified staff that don't work year-round, they're off already on that week, so they've only, they would only find that.
Either. Okay.
I mean, the, the other day that is not listed here is Columbus Day, but we have, don't we have school on Columbus Day sometimes?
Yeah, we do, a lot. I know this year we did.
I mean, it could just be a floating day. I mean, we could have someone request a day.
Well, I mean, not to get too complicated or in the weeds, but you could recognize Veterans Day as a holiday, and then you could write up a clause in this policy allowing a holiday exchange. So employees would then have the option to work on Veterans Day, or they could choose to exchange it for the day after Thanksgiving or Christmas Eve. You could set those parameters, uh, although I wouldn't necessarily have it extend over into... Well, I guess you could, you could decide whether that's in the calendar year or in the school year.
Yeah, I...
I don't wanna get too complicated and...
That's exactly right, which is why I've got it...
Complicated. It's starting to get too complicated already.
That's right.
It's a good idea, but it gets complicated.
It's like, it's like Corinne said, if they, or somebody said, if they wanna take it, they'll just take a vacation day.
Well, I like the idea of giving some employees some control over when they have some days off. So that's just the option that I'm thinking with that.
Do, we work on Veterans Day too, though, sometimes, right?
Yes.
Well, we might work, but it's recognized as a federal holiday.
I just wouldn't wanna have every classified staff member not show up to work one day and...
Yeah.
Cool.
And, and we're trying to get substitutes.
Yeah. So... Work could just stay at nine days. Nine days is better than seven.
Yes, it would be an improvement.
And I, Troy has twelve, so...
Yeah, didn't you say most schools have eleven? I thought you said most have eleven.
Well, I, when I worked for the state, I had ten days. Uh, twelve is the most I've heard of with Troy, but I'm sure that others might see more. Again, I'm just trying to, I just want our policy to be a little better than what it is right now. So don't have to give everything right now, but, uh, I just, I'm glad that we're looking at this.
Yeah, and the vacation time that you're recommending, Dave, I, I think it's great, because even waiting eight years in order to get three, three weeks or fifteen business days up... That's a little, I don't know how it is in the education field, but in other, it's a little antiquated. Because a lot of times it's five years, and you're awarded that three weeks.
Yeah.
I think what we found with just recently having both a maintenance supervisor as well as a transportation supervisor, that if you come from any bringing experience and you're selected for the position, if you come with experience, then that means that in your prior district, you were having some vacation days, and then to go back to nothing, and then really having that nothing for an entire year, that, say, for example, if there are time in their life that someone's having a military graduation or something, they don't really have a day to go and do that. So if they were being able to accrue some days, then that would allow them to not have to go as an unpaid day in order to attend, for example, a military graduation.
Yeah, the year-long wait has been very rough on some of the new hires.
I think getting rid of that year-long wait is smart. Um, when, let's say we hire somebody that comes with ten years of experience, do they, are they granted three weeks of vacation? Do they at least get that?
Yeah, that's called tacking on, and, um, that's part of the, the law, that if they come from a district where they were previously in full-time employment and there's no break when they go from that district to our district, then we, we do recognize the, the years of service that they had there. Correct.
With, with vacation?
Correct.
Got it.
And then my other question is, um, you said three years they would get paid out, and I think in where it's written in the yellow highlight, I don't see that it has any, um, time limit or years limit. It looks like it's just they're, they're gonna be paid for all of it. Is that how you want it, Dave, or did you want it to specify three years?
Um, you know what? I get, I didn't highlight that section. If you look at the end of the first paragraph, it states...
Oh, I see it. Yep.
"Part personnel may accrue a maximum of three years of vacation leave accrual at their current annual accrual rate." So if you're here, uh, earning two weeks, you can have, uh, what is that, thirty days total? Uh, when you go to three weeks, you can then have nine weeks total, which forty-five days. And then if you make it to the four weeks, you can have up to sixty days total.
Are they limited on how many days they can take in a year? So if you've been here, if you have the twenty days a year, but you have some accrued?
We have nothing currently that I'm aware of that limits that. Now, I know that it's written into my contract and Dr. Kump's contract, we have limits on what we can take. But nothing that I've seen in policy for other members. We could put that in there.
Oh, I, there's probably a reason we don't have it in there.
I don't recommend that. If they accrue, they should be able to use it.
Well, I, I think, um, the language needs, I, I guess I need some clarification, Dave.
Sure.
When you say that they can accrue a maximum of three years of vacation leave accrual, are you, are you talking about, like, three actual years? Or are you trying to essentially mirror what the statute provides, but instead of two, use three?
Right. Well, that's why I said three years of vacation leave accrual at their current annual accrual rate. Maybe that's not the right wording, but I, so if they get ten...
Yeah, I think we need to, to wordsmith that a little bit, to say that lawfully accrued and unused vacation leave to their credit at the time of separation, not to exceed the vacation leave accrued to their credit for the three years immediately preceding their separation in prorated proportion. So I think that type of language in there.
I'm fine with any suggestion on that.
And so then the other thing is, I'd say is that, um, I guess from my perspective, I, I think the vacation's important. I think that I would be, I agree with, with, um, Ann, we might even consider, if we can, bring it down from, from eight years to five years for, for the three weeks. But I, I would also be inclined to limit the amount that they can accrue to two years' worth, in that you really want people using vacation so that they're fresh. And if you're not forcing that to be taken, then they're not gonna be fresh, they're gonna get burned out and things like that. So I think you wanna have cer- certain aspects of this policy to incentivize people to rest and take those vacations.
I, I echo Simon's thoughts totally.
Well, okay.
It's a use it or lose it proposition, because a lot of, the theory, uh, what I heard in, in human resources is that... Because I mean, that was, that was the old way banking. Lot of employees did that and, and retired with some pretty big packages. But they, I think that kinda, that philosophy sort of left in the nineties, thinking that, yeah, the whole purpose of a vacation is to rest and renew, rejuvenate, to come back a better performer on the job. And I, I would rather see more vacation on the front end, less years of work, but also not, not, not saving all this time up to, so you get like a little bonus at the end of your career, you know? You're, that's what a vacation's for, mental health.
Well, we've currently got everybody, uh, people are saving up to three years right now. So if we changed it to two, would we do a one-time authorization to pay out the vacation that's been earned over those two years?
How have they been accruing, um, three years under our current policy?
Well, this, the, the system will let someone accrue up to three years if they retired on the last day of their third year. So you would earn, so you would get twenty, so let's say you worked two years, Ju- July one is your start date. And so you've done two years, and then in the third year, you retire June thirtieth. You would get your previous two years, and then you would get a third twenty days or whatever on June, on July first. I mean, we would owe you twenty days, because you've earned it by working that whole year. So that can give you thirty days.
Well, when I, when I look at the statute that you included in this, it indicates it's the the unused vacation leave to their credit at the time of separation, not to exceed the vacation leave accrued to their credit for the two years immediately preceding their separation, the prorated portion of earned but unused vacation for the current year. I see what you're saying. So then they get two and whatever they would have earned for that third.
Correct.
Well, I think, I mean, I'm okay with mirroring that language, I guess, um, with the policy, because then that would not exactly be three years, but not put us in a position of four, essentially, and... But I, I don't want people with three years worth of vacation getting paid to them and then not having taken any vacation. Then two things are happening, is our employees are getting rest, and then we have a big bill at the end.
Yeah.
So again, what do we do with the people that are already over three years or at three?
I think if you mirror the current language in the statute...
When I came on, the payroll system was set up to let people earn and carry over up to three years. And that, that's been...
Policy was that provided for under the, I mean, I guess what, what policy was that individual relying on in allowing that to occur?
Well, because right there, I mean, we could let somebody earn up to three years, and that's it.
Yeah.
Well, if they've earned it, Dave, why can't, I mean, Simon can, you know, advise us a little bit on this. Can't you have some type of, uh, clause as effective such and such? Moving forward, it applies, but for those that, you know, accrued, it's not fair to the people who were accruing that time under, under an approved policy to lose that. You know, they were, w- why can't you have it? Go ahead.
Yeah, we cer- we certainly don't wanna be unfair with people, and, and I think that we might have to think this through a little bit more.
Well, that's why I'm suggesting we could approve a one-time payout for anybody over two years.
Oh, yeah.
However...
I would be more inclined to say that they get, like, two years to use it, not necessarily payout, you know? I, I think there's different ways we could word this, that people might get a little extra vacation one year or two versus having to write somebody a check. I don't wanna be creating liability for the school districts here. Especially ones like this was accidentally done in violation of our current policies.
Yeah, I agree with Simon. Now is not the time with the current economy to be writing big checks. And I also like the idea of capping it, because what happens is then you have, um, people... I think somebody used the, said that you kind of get like a little bonus when you leave, and then you have people taking days off, but they're not putting in for it, because they're kind of, you know, they know they're saving that to get kind of, and...
Without putting in for it.
Well, we just wanna make sure they're using their time. And Simon and Ann both said it. We want people to be fresh and rejuvenated when they're here. We want them to take vacation. We want them to take these mental health days. We want them to, you know, go do something, whether it's a graduation, one of your kids has a baby, go, go take that time.
We also wanna caution us not to create a policy so that we expect people to spend down. And then, you know, you have too many people who have not staggered the use of their days throughout the year. And then, you know, here we come to the end of the, the, you know, accrual period or, you know, attendance year, and you have seven or eight people off, and you created a hardship on the district, because they're, they haven't... And you have seven or eight people off and you created a hardship on the district because they're, they haven't spent them. Many people use vacation as an insurance policy and um I I'm not, I'm not opposed to doing something that. You know, encourages people to use their time. Uh, I do like the idea of capping it. But at a certain point, I think you would just prorate any of that overage. I don't know, there's so many issues related to this po- policy that probably impact other policies.
Yeah.
So, you know, approving this in isolation, well, I commend you, Dave, for bringing it to our attention. And I wanna correct the issue about the accrual rates and make them, you know, uh, more fair. Um, I I think it brings up so many other policy issues that are related to this topic.
I think Dave can um figure those out and get this fixed. I still think this is an important thing that we need to address. That um Dave is pursuing and I think it's great for our employees. Don't, do we have, like, do they have to submit when they want to take a vacation day for approval? Or is it kind of like they put it in and they automatically get it?
Uh, it's, it's at the discretion of the superintendent and the supervisor. They put it in through the kiosk system.
So you can make sure that we're not um, you know, if it's a day with students, we don't have five lunch ladies out at the same time. If if we're gonna encourage them to use.
Again, the only people that get the vacation are administrators, uh, some of your secretaries at the board office. And your custodians that work year round.
Okay.
I mean, it's, you're not gonna see lunch ladies taking days off.
Okay.
Orchestrate that in that, say, for example, even if it's Mrs. Hagen, that if they have days to take off or vacation. That they don't usually, I mean, they coordinate that so they're both not taking them at the same time. It would be a rarity unless somebody had, for example, funeral or something in a close family that was unexpected, that you would have that overlap. Other than that, they, they do communicate and then they let me know that we're, I'm taking this week and the other person's taking the other week.
Okay.
Put some statement in there about operational need and and that's at the discretion of. Of of you to set those, whatever the minimum standards are for operational need. You just put some statement in there that.
See, that's the thing. I don't wanna just, I don't wanna be just putting things in there and then having us review it again and again. And I, that's what I wanna do tonight. I wanna try to get this one.
How many people, we're talking about people that are over the three years, which you said earlier, how many people is that?
Nobody's over three years, they're at three.
Okay, up to three years.
Yeah.
So how many, five people, twenty people? What are you thinking?
Um, I'd have to pull up my spreadsheet for that.
Okay.
I know that Art Hoff was one. He was the maintenance supervisor. He had three years and he got cut short. Pay him out everything that he had on file.
I remember that.
Yeah. And I don't feel that that was right for him to not receive all of his payment.
So Simon, isn't there something that can be written in there, effective this date, this is the policy that applies? So that those that are, that, you know, have fairly accrued this. Yeah, like a grandfather. I mean, is that?
Well, I think I, I can't answer that question without reviewing the applicable statutes or current existing policies and referencing things. I think that's, and I, I really shouldn't be providing us legal advice. I think that's more of a Ricker and Eckler question. I think Dave does a great job. Talk to him. But I I would suggest something exactly like that, Ann, that if that's possible, that that's what we would do. Have some type of of policy that provides for the attrition of the excess. Of those accrued vacation days and while being fair to to employees. And 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 then also then mirroring the language of the statute that currently exists. Which I think what happened is somebody read that statute and it sounds like to me they may have misinterpreted it. Cause what it looks like to me in the statute, just my quick reading of it, is that you can accrue up to two years. But then on your third year vacation that you have. Proportionally accrued that year gets added to it, maybe. I'm not sure without really thinking through it. But I think that that's what we wanna mirror. So Dave, I think if our, my suggestion would be for the group and and whatever. The the consensus is I'm good with, but that we would, instead of having the three-year language that you had there. Which, when I read that, I mean, that means like a total of like three hundred and sixty-five days times three, accrued vacation. I think we have to do it exactly the way they have in statute and I would, I would kind of substitute that sentence that you had in there and I'm trying to find it here. Uh, where you have support personnel may accrue a maximum of three years of vacation leave. And any vacation leave above the three-year maximum amount will be forfeited. I think what you do is you just mirror what it says in the statute. Upon separation from employment, a non-teaching school employee shall be entitled to compensation. As current rate of pay for all off the accrued and unused vacation leave to his credit at the time of separation. Not to exceed the vacation leave accrued to his credit for the two years immediately preceding a separation and the prorated portion. Of his earned but unused vacation leave for the current year. I would add that in there.
Well, it, it doesn't apply anymore if we accrue on a monthly basis.
Well, I think you can reward it to make it that way. I mean, that like.
So, I mean.
Isn't that just what they've accrued on the, on a monthly basis?
No, that is based on an a- on an annual basis. So when you receive your vacation once a year. If you leave a quarter into your last anniversary, you get.
You just look two years back. You just look twenty-four months back as what was accrued. I don't think that changes that.
Well, that's two years and then six months, or two years and four months, or two years and eight months.
What do you, wait, what do you mean? It, it wouldn't just be, even if we start accruing them on a monthly basis, when they go to leave. If they get paid out for the two most previous years of employment. Does it, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure how those two things conflict with each other.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't think they do.
Okay, so right now, someone could get paid out for their previous two years and then we owe them another twenty days because they worked almost a full year.
Okay, I guess I'm looking at it year to date.
Right, sorry. So the policy currently under the state statute allows somebody to get almost three, uh, up to three years paid out. And if we're trying to reduce it down to two years paid out, I mean, we're less than the current policy or current statute.
Well, when I'm reading that statute language.
Well, I've had that confirmed by Dave Lampy, Ricker.
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, I think when I'm reading that. I, I don't think that conflicts if we're accruing them the way on a monthly basis. You're just, you're just.
Are you, are you limiting them to two years then? Because if I'm accruing.
I think you have to switch it to, I think we have to, to switch it. I see what you're saying, Dave, but I think, I think that you would switch that to three years immediately preceding a separation and then you would cut it off there.
So, yeah, that's what I was trying to do. Three years, you're done.
Yeah, so. I mean, not to exceed the occasionally accrued to their credit for the three years immediately preceding their separation period.
Correct.
End it.
Right, because that's.
But without the uh other language, the way it reads right now is three. But I also think that.
I apologize, I moved my room around and the sun is still in my face.
No, that's right. But I also think it's probably good that way you don't have to see mine. Um, the um. But I think, I think we still wanna limit it to two years eventually and we just gotta work on grandfathering in. Anybody who's accrued beyond that up to three before that. I think that we, we have Dave come up with some language, if everybody's in, has a consensus with that. That we, we wanna, going forward, we want people to use vacation and we don't want them to be able to. Two years of vacation accrued for the two previous years. And if they don't, if they don't use it after the grandfathering portion of it, then they lose it. But then we also wanna grandfather anybody who's accrued up to three years at this point in time um to be able to. To, to not include in that maximum what they may have accrued up to that three-year maximum. And I think you wanna have that first in, first out, as far as when it's used. And I think myself through that. In other words. Vacation use on, well, you can't do that because then you lose it anyway. So, but I think we wanna exclude that. I gotta think myself through that. I think Dave should be thinking himself through it rather than me. Um, because he knows the statutes and stuff that might, any other policies that may, may kind of co-mingle and and make change analysis. But that's my suggestion and and um I would also, I mean, I, I, I think that. Waiting eight to fourteen years for three weeks. Probably tough. I would say I would be inclined to suggest that if you worked there at five years, you get the three weeks. So five to ten would get three weeks. And I would suggest ten to, after ten, ten years, then you get up to four weeks. And that's the maximum, so that you're not waiting till you're fifteen for four weeks.
So, so what I'm hearing is grandfather people that are already over two years, let them keep the three. But all new hires or anyone currently under two years, that's their max is the two years.
Yeah, but I, I think we really wanna.
Do, we wanna, I think we're, I think what Simon's saying, correct me if I'm wrong, Simon, but I agree what's, what Simon just summarized there. I'd rather, if it's in our budget, Dave, and you know, we haven't really talked about that. But I would rather see that five to ten-year timeframe on the three weeks, which I think is more in line with. With our.
I'm, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Okay, and then, then what, the eleven to, what is it? What'd you say, Simon, for the fifteen? Fifteen for the, for, I'm, I think we need to go up on the amount of vacation days earlier in their employment. And then I would like to see this accruing banking, if you will, vacation days. Really minimized, if not eliminated. I think it's a good trade-off. I, I think people would very much appreciate having those longer vacation days. Earlier in their employment. And I also agree with Mrs. Dunaway's, you know, paying these big sums out at the end. That's, that's my thought.
Yeah, and and honestly, when it comes to the budget, they're either working or they're taking the day off. It's not gonna add anything to the budget.
Okay.
So it's the payout at the end that adds to the budget. And so.
Yeah.
So again, so we've got zero to five, six to ten and eleven on. That's two, uh, ten days, fifteen days, twenty days. Accruing immediately when they start work. And then, again, the question I asked was, so what I'm hearing is grandfathering those currently over two years. That may have already accrued up to three, they can keep that three until they resign or retire.
Well, I think that's the, the last part of that, I think is the thing I'm not real clear on yet is. Whether that's what we wanna do, is that so it only, the limit for two years is only for new employees? Or whether we wanna just um. Even for, for that to expire. So they have time to use it, or if they retire, they get during that window of time, they, they use it, they, or they get paid for it. Do we, I guess we wanna have a sunset clause on that grandfather and like, hey, either retire, leave and get paid. Before this, this sunset provision kicks in or you lose them.
Okay.
I'm inclined to say that we just make it for new employees going forward, just not to. To create something that's not fair for people who have been relying potentially on this.
And we've done, we've done grandfather clauses before with other things. It was before my time. But uh, there's currently one in place on merit insurance pay for those that didn't accept. Don't use our insurance. If they were hired before two thousand and one and they don't use our insurance, then they got ninety dollars. A month for that, that was the, a single pay amount, a single employee amount. So we still have a few people left on that one. Or if they change their, if they do join insurance or they change their plan and they lose that. So anyway, when we do.
I think, I think I'm, I'm, my personal feeling is you wanna treat people fairly.
I agree.
And so if they, if they've kind of relied on that over the years, I'd be inclined to just grandfather that and have no sunset provision. Like you kinda, just the way you just said, Dave, that'd be my recommendation and but for new hires that we have a limit of two years.
And, and when it comes to vacation, I, I keep a spreadsheet on it anyway. So, cause right now I have to remember when to go in and accrue for everybody on their one-year anniversary. As there are thirty-three people on it right now currently doing vacation in our district. And so um, changing that to a monthly accrual makes it easier. Cause you just, you don't, it's automatically done by the system. And, and then I'm just going in and making sure that they're, the, the balance they're allowed to have is updated when necessary. So, I mean, I don't mind keeping that spreadsheet and then no, making notes saying their max is two years or their max is three years. It's, I mean, I can talk with Mr. Lampy and and see how we could write that in there. To where all current employees are grandfathered in to have the max of three and be done with it.
I, I think it's a good idea to have uh Dave write this because this is the type of stuff that can get sued.
Is it inappropriate to expect those employees who have a three-year accrual to spend it down in a time period to be determined? So that everybody gets into that two-year timeframe?
Well, I think we, I think Simon was saying he didn't wanna have that sunset clause of paying it down.
All right.
But again, I can run it by Mr. Lampy.
I went back and forth on that, Joelle, and in my, 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 where I ended up thinking myself throughout with. Out loud with all of you is that I felt that it may be unfair to do that to people that may have relying on that in the past. And so my thought was, is that we only make it, we don't go retroactively or have any sunset provision where they have to use it. And that's just for all new employees, that's gonna be what they're governed by. I don't know. I, I don't have all the answers, obviously. Everybody knows that.
No, but you're, you're giving a concept, Simon, and I, you know, I, I love, I tend to agree with that. Like I said, in my simplistic analysis, which is very simple, I'd rather see more vacation time upfront earlier on. And back away from the, the banking vacation and paying it out at the end.
I agree.
Okay, so just to recap really quick, so I know I'm on the same page with everybody, given this whole Zoom situation. We like, we like Dave's basic policy. Um, we, we're probably gonna have to figure out some exchange for Good Friday because that will. Um, it, it could fall into a conflict with the academic calendar. So if, if we wanna have a Good Friday date, it needs to be another date that won't conflict with an academic calendar. And um, you're gonna check on a way to. Just have new hires be limited to two years accrual for vacation days. And um, you're gonna have that checked with Lampy. And is that, is that right? Did I, did I mention everything? But basically, we like this.
One to four, or one to, zero to five, six to ten.
Yes.
Eleven plus.
Yes, yes.
Now, not to throw another sticky wicket in there, but we've got employees that have been working for seventeen years or eighteen years. And. Do we just say as of? I mean, like, starting right now. Do we go back and retro old years that they've worked and give, but we don't wanna do that because that max, I just say right now.
Yeah, I don't think we, they just get the benefit moving forward.
We'll move them up and put them where they need to be now based on what their years of service are and.
Yes.
They're benefiting from that.
We're not going back. We're, we're not going back to take it away, but we're not editing either.
Yeah, going back makes things hard. Uh, retro, that was, that was fun.
And Dave, just to help me with this, it's five, so the zero to five is five years, the six to ten is.
Zero to five is ten days.
Ten days, and then the eleven plus, is it?
Twenty days. Twenty days.
Twenty days.
Yep, I can take care of this. And.
Got it.
Good Friday alternate. And Good Friday alternate. Would we want to put something in there maybe that says if Good Friday falls on a regular school day, the employee can work with supervisors? To switch it for another day? Or, because I, it might be a little harder to find an alternating holiday that they can trade it for.
Dave, since I've been in the district for six years, we've always been off on Good Friday. Do you remember a time that we weren't?
I think there may have been one time when.
Okay.
When the treasurer was off and nobody else was, so.
Okay, in the six years that I've been in tip, we've been off, I think that always kind of works out with the calendar committee, that they just always kind of work it out that way.
And I know that when I, again, when I looked at the policy, it states Good Friday in Troy's policy as well. So maybe they try to ensure that school isn't in session that day as well.
Yeah, we've never had school since I've been here.
Can't we just make it a policy that we don't have school on Good Friday?
I think the calendar committee definitely looks at that. You know, but, uh, yeah, and we do to use our head.
Honestly, when we're.
See if he chose.
When, when we're doing the ca, the calendar committee, we look at which days are holidays and we build around those anyway. So. If that becomes a, a, a day that we recognize. Then I don't see why we couldn't build that in. So.
I have a question for you. I'm sorry. Get, getting back to your earlier statement about kind of reviewing other district policies. And we were, um, coming up a little short and looking in terms of benefits and the like and vacation. Do you feel this brings us closer to competitive, being competitive with other districts revising these days?
I think the zero to five and six, I think that change right there will really make people happy. Um, I think even just adding one or two days would have made people ecstatic for holidays. And I, I think what we're talking about right here does fix, um, uh, an issue. That people have brought to me every year since I've been a treasurer here.
Great, great.
I, I really think that this could go a long way to showing that we saw that there was an issue. We want to fix it. And make it better. So, yeah, and I think that this will really help.
And financially, are districts able to do this, Dave, you, you feel from a dollars and cents perspective?
Again, it's, it's, uh, what, so what you're doing is you're adding in maybe the, a sub cost. And i- it's the sub cost for all of these, because administration doesn't get subs. Um, you're, you're talking maybe a sub for custodian. And, and so the dollars here that we're discussing is very limited, very limited.
Great, great. Sounds like a win-win.
Yeah, so I will move forward and see if I can get a better draft of this. I'll try to have something for the Friday board update. And we could, um, try doing a first read on Monday. At the next works, at the next regular meeting, or we could try moving it in a little later. So either way, we have to do, uh, two reviews before it can become policy.
Okay. And go ahead, Dr. Company, anything else?
Uh, I'm, uh, unless we're ready for the next item.
I, I think we're good. I was, I don't think any more final comments, so.
Okay, I, I do have one more question. So, so I mentioned Mr. Hoff had resigned earlier this school year. Uh, and he had, he has left vacation on the books. Um, would we? Look, or maybe we do a, a board resolution paying that out to him or. Uh, what was left out over for his three years because he had saved three years up. Um, but he didn't, his final year. I think he was hired in August or September. I think he was hired September first, so when he resigned on December thirty-first. That was just a quarter. So we only paid him out two years and a quarter accrual of twenty days. So five, so we paid him forty-five days instead of the sixty that he had on the books.
I think that we have to discuss that in executive session.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, valid point. I agree.
Okay.
We can add that for Monday.
All right, then I think we're done.
Okay, Dr. Kumpf.
Alright, uh, next item, I just, uh, it is, uh, regarding the evaluations this year for our certified staff. And that's based on just our mandated closure and also House Bill one ninety-seven. Um, and so, uh, working closely with, um, just the documents that were coming out from the state. About options that were being provided as well as, uh, working with the, uh, TCEA, the teachers' union. Uh, to make sure that, that we would need, uh, a memorandum of understanding that they would be agreeable to signing off on. As well as if, once our board supported it. Um, and so basically what we've arrived at, working with the, the administrative team and all the other documents. Is, uh, the aspect that ultimately House Bill one ninety-seven indicates that, uh. If a, if it seemed impractical to complete an evaluation due to the closure and, and items that were left undone. That they could, uh, there would be, uh, a button in, in the ETPEZ, which is the, the Ohio portal. And essentially then it could be rolled over and it could say COVID nine, it says COVID nineteen, so that that does not have to be fully completed. But knowing that in our district, that we were rather far along with that process. And a number of our teachers and administrators would really prefer to go ahead and complete that. Uh, we've been able to arrive at, at what I call several options. And so on your attachments, you'll find one. That there'll be one that is what I call a grid. Um, and there's one that's about SLO and that's a template, but I want to really start with the grid if we could take a minute to look at that. I think it's a good innocence visual breakdown about what the memorandum of understanding really outlines in a narrative form. But it indicates that ultimately there are, are those that have completed evaluations and already entered them in. And have even pinned off, that's a type of a sign off with a, just a, a digital code. That those will remain entered in and will be utilized and they are wishing to do that and we are as well. Uh, and then those that were previously, uh, completed observations and walkthroughs, uh, will be carried forward. Toward completing the evaluation. In other words, if they have a component that's finished or they have not done their final, uh, conferences. Uh, some of those kind of entries that we would go ahead and complete that process. Or, uh, they could choose to use the COVID nineteen, uh, option in the ETPEZ. Which will exempt the staff from completing it. And what happens with that though, is that the individual has to understand and realize that. With that option, that they will repeat the evaluation during the twenty twenty-one school year. And so, um, that, that's what that looks like. Then the other piece is we looked at both student growth measures. We have, um. Two, uh, two components. We have the growth measures and we also have the walkthroughs. So we have the, for the growth measures, we have SLO, student learning objectives. That's a narrative piece. And then we also have, uh, a value-added data. So for our student learning objectives. That is a situation where some of them do absolutely have that completed. Others have the very last piece of data. They've had mid-year information and even maybe in the last quarter, but they won't have necessarily fourth. And so they will make a best faith, uh, professional projection of what that will come to. Uh, and then that will be reflected on with the principal and with that particular teacher. Or, or in the, um, value added, the eighteen nineteen is in it. So there was a little confusion in House Bill one ninety-seven. It indicates that value added will not be part of the, um. Evaluation process with the nineteen twenty. Um, they evaluate, value-added scores because there will be no nineteen twenty value-added scores. And that's because the state tests have been canceled. So that there are scores that are for eighteen nineteen and they are actually in the portal in the system. And so those will be utilized for the evaluation process. And the teachers realize that, and as I said, a number of them have already pinned off on it, so they understand that. Uh, and then the walkthroughs and observations that any remaining ones, so that we would still do the pre-conference. We would do a, uh, via Google Hangout. There would be the, uh, classroom Google Hangout. There would be a teacher narrative of the lesson and a post-conference, uh, via Google Hangout. And the walkthroughs could be conducted in a Zoom meeting in the Google Hangout or any other teacher-student interaction. So, um, it allows us to continue to proceed with that. There is a rubric that is part of that ETPEZ. Part of the OTEZ, OPEZ process and the rubric, yeah, that entry would just be, uh, gone over. And that would be, uh, a discussion via Google Hangout. The summative evaluation would be the same thing and then that's pinned off as usual. Uh, and so I just provided a little bit of rationale about this, that there's been a lot of work that's already been put into this. Uh, by both our teachers and our administrative tasks, uh, staff. The value-added scores are already in place for the eighteen nineteen year that is actually in the portal. Um, and there's a number that's on continuing contracts. Certainly they would like to proceed with this and have the opportunity for that. And then, uh, there are a number of, right now on this particular cycle that are on a three-year cycle and they. Uh, a number of them have been accomplished teachers so that they are very strong standing and very comfortable moving forward. And certainly, those that are in a carryover situation, that adds to the load for next year for evaluation. So to avoid having double the number to be evaluated, this is extremely helpful to be able to proceed this way. And it's, it's great that our teachers are very interested in doing this as, as well as our administrators. And then the other piece that, um, was of, uh, one of the forms or, uh, attachments. Was the SLO scoring template. So we, uh, have not had this before, but this just would create, uh, consistency. Particularly in this particular situation of looking at our SLO, uh, that is in, in process. And then there becomes a narrative score on that or I, I would call it, yeah, numeral rating. Uh, and that just shows the percentage of growth, uh, that was met or exceeded. And, uh, then the formula for building that across and then, once again, the implications based on the data. Uh, and the professional reflection, what is the potential area of instructional focus for the next year? That's kind of queuing that up based on this information. And then based on that data as well, what would you deem as being the strength? And so this would be one of the parts or attachments that we could upload into the ETPEZ or have it as an attachment just with. A, a teacher's evaluation packet. Uh, in the MOU, that's not part of these two pieces, but the actual MOU, there's also an additional statement that indicates that. Uh, for our district, that we will not be moving toward the, what's called the OTEZ two point oh. Uh, and so there's a lot still that has to be done on that. We were in a situation with our union contract that we could wait one more year. Because our contract, once again, has this one last school year. And so we were able to stay with the, uh, OTEZ one point oh. But they're now in House Bill one ninety-seven. They are giving space that all districts has, have an option of whether to move forward or not. And we definitely, as a district, want to wait and not move forward for this school year to be in, uh, OTEZ two point oh. And that just puts that in there so we don't have to have us, another resolution later on. Any questions on that?
Um, Greta, in the MOU on number seven, it says March sixteenth, twenty nineteen. Um, I'm probably, I'm thinking you meant twenty twenty.
Yes.
So that might.
I thought we had that corrected, but that we messed it up, got that uploaded. Thank you, Corinne.
It's not a big deal, but you know, those dates.
Yes.
Yeah.
No, it is.
I have no trouble pulling that up. It's the very first attachment. That you sent us.
So that's paragraph seven or item seven?
Item seven, yeah, you'll just know to fix that before you sign it, Dr. Kumpf.
Okay, I, and I'll do.
Yeah, whoever created this document, it's number seven. Just change the March sixteenth to twenty.
Twenty twenty instead.
Right. Thanks, Corinne.
Mm-hmm. Thank you very much.
Thank you to everyone who put in all the time to get this, um, you know, prepared for us to, to the vote on tonight.
I appreciate your support on this. Uh, it, it was a big project, but I do think we're in a good place on it. It's an important piece for everyone, those that's being evaluated and for those that are putting in the time to do the evaluations.
Imagine there are a lot of systems you're looking at.
Are we ready to move forward or do it, does he? Okay. Alright, so. Item A, are you ready for me to read that?
Under new business?
Yeah, go ahead, Anne. New business?
Okay, uh, item A, approval to amend the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty evaluation process to reflect the changes. Outlined in House Bill one ninety-seven due to COVID nineteen. Details of the amended evaluation process are outlined in the required attachment, attached MOU memorandum of understanding.
Motion.
A second.
Motion is seconded by Joellen and Corinne. Any further discussion?
Recognizing that we're making the correction.
Correction on number seven. And I would note that if, if, and hopefully this is approved, that this will then, uh, be provided to the staff. Yet tonight or, or early tomorrow morning.
Okay, Dave, are we ready for a vote?
Sure. Okay. Heatherly.
Yes.
Dahl.
Yes.
Dunaway.
Yes.
Patrick.
Simon, you're muted.
I'm muted, yes. Uh, Zakor.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
No problem. Okay, so now we are going to adjourn to executive session for purposes authorized under Board of Education Policy zero one six six. And ORC one two one dot two two G one to consider the compensation of a public employee or official. And the board would like to invite Dr. Kumpf and Mr. Stevens into executive session. And don't anticipate any action being taken tonight.
I'll move.
I'll second. Moving seconded by Corinne and Teresa.
Ready for a vote?
Yes.
Dahl.
Yes.
Dunaway.
Yes.
Heatherly.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Zakor.
Yes.
Okay, so everybody should have a separate link that Corinne sent. Do you want to take like a five or ten minute break? Okay, five minute break. So let's jump back on at. Seven twenty, alright, just make it seven twenty.
Thank you.
Hey, everybody.
Thank you.
Yep. Hang on, Kitty.
Hey, Simon, I believe we're going into a.
You want me to leave right now?
Yeah, I mean, I think we're going into another meeting.
Alright, so I'll leave and then come back on this one?
Yeah, yeah, I'll just, just come back on this one. It'll still be running.
Okay.
Well, thanks. Well, thanks.
I think we're waiting on Anne. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, oh, I heard someone. It just sounds so quiet.
Are we all here?
I think we're still waiting for Anne.
Okay, perfect. I didn't scroll down. I don't see everybody. Oh, there we go. Oh, yeah, everybody good and back. Remember last week when my computer died? Maybe that happened to her.
There she is.
Oh, good.
She's on her iPad.
Okay. Okay, so we are back in regular session. And I would like to announce the next, sorry, my other computer just stopped on me. Regular Board of Education meeting will take place on Monday, April 27th via remote connectivity on YouTube at 6 o'clock. And that's it for I have for all the upcoming meetings, and I just need a motion to adjourn.
I motion we adjourn.
Second. Okay, so Corinne and Joellen, Dave.
Okay. Dahl.
Yes.
Heatherly.
Yes.
Dunaway.
Yes.
Patrick.
He's muted.
He's on mute. Simon, you're on mute.
We can read your lips. I was trying to say something before we jumped into the motion adjourn. So I would appreciate if somebody voted no along with me on this, so I could, to no on the adjournment, so I could talk about, I was gonna talk about.
Oh, sure, I'll.
How do we do that in the middle of the vote?
Well, I, I don't, I, I'd move to amend the motion to adjourn to take place immediately following my request to speak to the board.
Motion to.
Dave, where are we?
From the Roberts Rules of Order, I just, you, you guys have moved to, to, to adjourn. Before it just occurred, we jumped right into the voting. I'm, I'm gonna say just point of order. And I'd like move to amend that motion to adjourn that's already started to take place after I've had the opportunity to discuss one item.
Go ahead, Simon. I'm just trying to figure out where we were in the voting thing. I can't remember.
I didn't have Simon or Mrs. Accor.
Okay, so there were already three noes, is what I'm trying to establish?
There were three yes votes.
Yes.
Oh, three yes to adjourn. Okay, gotcha. Okay, so go back to Simon's, because he was on mute, so I got confused. So where are we, Dave?
I, he just would like to ask, he's asking us to motion to adjourn, motion to amend the motion to adjourn and allow him to address the board. And return back to the motion to adjourn after he addresses the board.
Do you have a handle that?
Well, I mean, it's just a point of order. I, the, we jumped right into a motion to adjourn without any discussion or any calls of the general membership for any additional business before we concluded.
Okay.
I would like to add my just quick request of the board prior to the adjournment. I'm not opposed to adjourning. And so my thought was the quickest, easiest way to do is to amend the adjournment motion to have us adjourn as soon as I make my request to the board.
I'd rather, yeah.
Go ahead, Dave. What's your opinion?
I would just say, Simon, why don't we just pause and let you address the board?
Yeah, I agree. I'm totally fine with that.
Right, so what I was gonna move is, is ask the board add to the next meeting's agenda. I think Joellen indicated she, she might be willing to do this, is to add the open enrollment for discussion and for, and for a potential vote at the next meeting.
I requested the president that we add that as an agenda item.
To do what?
Hang on for a second.
I would like to add to the next meeting's agenda, open enrollment for discussion and for a vote.
I don't want to rehash this again.
Yeah, I'm a no. We've already spent five meetings on this. I don't.
Now, we have, we have two board members who have asked to do that. Jo and I are, are asking to do that.
Okay, Joellen asked me to add it to tonight, to the work session, and it was too late because it was five hours before the meeting. So I'm sorry, Joellen, it's too late, so.
So that's why I'm saying for next board meeting.
Correct, so I guess if you're making, my answer is no, there's nothing else to talk about. We just had it.
You have two board members who have asked you to put something on the agenda. You have to.
Uh, I don't think we do. We've already discussed this five times.
You have two board members have asked you to put something on the agenda.
Yeah, but it's been a motion, Simon. Under what Roberts, are you trying to resend it? I don't understand.
Under, under what Roberts Rules of Order am I precluded from doing it?
Well, I mean, we're, we're trying to have a vote to end this, and you're trying to now, under your comment, insert an additional vote. I just don't think.
Well, it was, if you recall, it was a point of order that you.
Yeah, if I recall, you were making a comment.
Offer the position of the board to add anything else. We have a right to do that. I am, I'm, I'm asking and moving that the next agenda for the next meeting has this on the agenda as I'm allowed to, I've been joined by Joellen, and that's all I'm saying. And I think that that has to be done. If you guys want to present to me some authorities to why I'm not allowed to do that, I'm glad to look at it.
I mean, Simon, we can do that. I don't think that it's good boardmanship. I'm, I'm just gonna throw that word out there. To continue to drag up dead weight again, we have to move forward as a board and work for Tips City Schools, not for your private agenda.
Okay, let me, let me attempt to rephrase. I think the implications of this vote has created some hardships for people in our community because.
They're not in our community.
Because of these current circumstances, those, those students that were open enrolled who have now received notice that they cannot attend our district anymore, their families don't have any other options. And so.
Yeah, they do. They could go to the schools where they live.
And what, what does that mean? They don't have another option?
Well, I, I believe that there, well, that's what I want us to talk about. Are there any other options that we can explore for them given the hardship that we're creating because of the COVID-19?
We are not creating an option. We're, we're not creating a hardship, Joellen.
No, that's, that's an unfair narrative.
Yeah, this is taking away from our real job, which is working. Yeah, this is taking away from our real job, which is working for Tipton City Schools. You and Simon have a private agenda for whoever it is that you have a private agenda for. If you want to bring it back up under Roberts rules, Simon has the right to, that's fine. But I want to just be clear, this is your two's private agenda for whoever it is.
Well, you know what, I, I'm not gonna, I, point of order, I don't need to be personally attacked here because I want to bring something on the agenda. If you want to articulate arguments as to what I'm going to bring upon, that's fine. But don't imply or infer that I'm acting inappropriate on a personal agenda on a board meeting because I've simply asked to add something to an agenda.
Well, let me give you a different.
Hey, I'm gonna ask that we stop. I'm gonna ask.
One second, one second. I, I want to, I want to address Simon. Simon, you're asking for something on the agenda. This was motioned twice, open enrollment, and it failed, okay, under a full board vote. Now, if you have something you want to address under old business this coming Monday, fine, I guess that's okay. I mean, I'm not an expert at this. I'm learning. But I'm trying to, you know, I'm, I'm trying to learn as much as I can. I don't think there's any prohibition against you speaking out on open enrollment under old business. But when I read Roberts rules, the purpose of, of Roberts rules is so you can't keep putting motions and motions and motions because it, it does, it doesn't go anywhere. And if it's my understanding rescinding, then it should be the prevailing party. In other words, the way I read it is the, someone on the prevailing party has to be the one to motion that to, to put it up to a vote again. And you're not on the prevailing.
I, I, I don't know the answer to that question, Anne, but I'm.
Look it up in Roberts rules. I didn't know it either until I read it.
And so I, I don't know the answer to that question, but I'm, I am, I am moving to add it to the agenda.
Simon, 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 if I may appeal to your logic, the reason there's a, a procedure like that is so we don't go down into an abyss of continually re-putting things up on the agenda over and over and over. Some point, the governance needs to move forward to new items.
I understand that, but I, I think that there's been, there's been a lot of things that have occurred that need to be discussed.
Then why aren't you discussing it under old business next week? You don't have to motion for that, do you?
I'm, I'm, I'm wanting to add it as an agenda item.
Hey, Simon, so I'm just kind of jumping here as board president. When this happened, um, okay, so I'm trying to, we had the meet, the board meeting on March 16th, there were only four board members. So open enrollment, um, you know, we changed the open enrollment status. So then you and Joellen requested a special meeting, which was absolutely, you know, you're right. So we had a special meeting on it. And then we had another board vote because everybody said it wasn't fair that we wanted all five board members to vote on this, which I agree. This is a big decision. It impacted, you know, 30 kids. So, fine, so then we did a full board vote and then the board voted to end open enrollment. So during that time, I had a few phone calls with Dave Lampy to Anne's point of, I said to Dave Lampy, Dave, you know, how many times can we keep putting this on the agenda? And what Anne said is correct. The prevailing party has to be the one to put it back on the agenda. So for the special meeting, it was you and Joellen. So now the prevailing party, if my information from Dave Lampy is correct, would be myself, Anne, and Joellen.
Who directed you to get that opinion from David Lampy?
I was just doing, I was just.
How was that inquiry and, and answer communicated to the rest of the board?
Simon, I allowed you to have, after your special meeting, I reached out to Dave Lampy because of, we all got the email from Dave Lampy, Simon. It was about the weird thing about the computer software messing up the vote. Nobody really realized that happened. So Dave, I don't know.
That happened before the special meeting, that email.
Okay. Like, that's how, Simon, that's how all of this got started.
I, I, I don't want to rehash the history here. I'm familiar with it.
Okay.
I'm, I'm asking that it be added to the agenda. I'm indicating to me right now that you have asked Dave Lampy for a legal opinion as to whether I'm allowed to do that.
No, I did not. This is going back to March.
That's what you just said. It's on video, Teresa.
Oh, my God, Simon, I'm going back to March 16.
He did not say that.
They reached out to Dave Lampy, or I think Dave Lampy reached out to me. Dave Stevens, do you remember if Dave called us about the software thing?
No, I called Dave.
Okay.
I'm not, I'm not talking about the software right now.
Okay.
Talking about my rights to call this again. You just said things like the prevailing party can only bring it up, et cetera.
Simon, when the whole soft.
That was an opinion David Lampy just told you. So if that's not the case, that's fine. But if there is, so what I'm doing right now, I just make it very succinct, is that I'd like to add it to the agenda for next meeting. And if somebody has some authority as to why I'm allowed to do that, I'm very glad to look at it.
But you want to put it on the agenda for what purpose? That's what I'm confused about.
To discuss.
For Mearley State, it, it has created a hardship for those families because they don't have any options. They can't go buy a house right now. They can't move into our district. There has been no closure for their students. And we talked about caring about students. There's been no action that our students are able to conclude their school year among their teachers and their friends.
But Joellen, this was, this was, wait a minute, wait, I'm sorry. You know, there, there was no trickery here. Every year you sign those forms, there's no guarantee.
So this would be something that would be discussed at the next meeting, not tonight. And that's, I'm not wanting to discuss it tonight. I'm discussing it at the next meeting.
Okay, so Simon, myself, Corinne, Dave Stevens, and Greta, we have a meeting tomorrow at 3:30, just like we do every month, a week before the board meeting, where we set the agenda. So we will discuss, the four of us, that you want to add this as an agenda item.
Thank you. Joellen and I both do.
Understood. Point taken. Understood. Okay, so now, going back to the motion to adjourn the meeting, do I need to redo that, Dave, to say it again? Or do we need to just vote again?
Uh, let's just vote it again.
Okay, so it was, Corinne made the motion and Jerome second.
Yep, um, so I've got Doll.
Yes.
Heather, Heatherly.
Yes.
Dunaway.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
The core.
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Meeting adjourned.
Thanks.
Goodbye, everyone.
Hi.
Good night.
Come back, Greta.